Good morning. It's Wednesday, February 8th, 2017, right at nine o'clock like we're supposed to be, and we're here for our weekly Board of Commissioners meeting. We're in the Senator Hearing Room, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. We start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, so please join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Let's see. First item is always public comment. Unfortunately, no one has signed up to take advantage of that, so we move right to a little bit longer consent calendar. Commissioner Carlson?
Sure. Mr. Chair, I would move today's consent calendar under Business Services. Approve recommendations to adjust upward salary ranges for Property Appraiser 1, number 331, Property Appraiser Senior, number 333, Sales Data Analyst 2, number 327, Sales Data Analyst 3, number 326, and Appraisal Section Supervisor, number 334. Also approve recommendations to uphold the pay grades for Sales Data Analyst 1, number 320, Property Appraiser 2, number 332, and Custodial Supervisor, number 498. Now approve a recommendation to reactivate and adjust upward the salary range for Classification Building Official, number 118. Under District Attorney, approve the grant agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Justice for $223,997.40 to fund a restitution victim advocate at Victim Assistance. Under Health, approve Amendment Number 12 to the Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon Health Authority to add $3,995 in funding for the Women, Infants, and Children Program. Under the Sheriff's Office, approve the contract for services with Bridgeway Recovery Services for $291,312 to provide women's reentry treatment. And under the Tax Office, approve a property tax refund in the amount of $18,016.54 to Northwest Group, Inc.
All right, I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? No, none, so call a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Three action items this morning, one to be after a public hearing at 9:30. So the first item, action item we'll go to will be under Health. We consider approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Woodburn on behalf of Woodburn Police Department for $190,000 to provide one sworn law enforcement professional to the Mobile Crisis Team. And Scott Richards, whoever...
Sure.
Good morning. This sounds like good news, and I hope it is.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
In 2014, the Health Department was successful in an RFP process with the Oregon Health Authority in receiving funding for Mobile Crisis Services. We started that initial partnership with both the... Too far away. With both the Sheriff's Office and the Salem Police Department. With that funding, we placed mental health professionals with the officers in patrol cars responding to individuals that were... Or families that had a mental health concern or problem. So that started a process that we think has proven enormously successful. You'll hear from Ann Marie and the Sheriff here that it's just been extremely positive in our goal of diverting people from unnecessary criminalization into mental health treatment and services. So this year, we were also successful in obtaining some additional funding from Oregon Health Authority, and our goal is to add another team to North County, to Woodburn, so that we have an officer from Woodburn Police Department and a mental health professional focused on North County. But Ann Marie, we'll talk more about this, but really, this is very much a team effort. It's, I think, important to note, too, that as part of that team effort, even Hope County has now two Mobile Crisis Teams, and our teams meet with them as well in kind of responding to the entire area and with the same goals. So I'll pass this along to Ann Marie, and she can tell you a little bit more about how things are going. Unfortunately, Chief Ferris was unable to be here today. It would've been nice to have Woodburn Police here, but it was fairly short notice, and so they were unable to attend.
Morning, Commissioners. For the record, Jason Myers, Sheriff. It's a privilege to be here today and to talk about this opportunity to expand our Mobile Crisis Team. Just to give you an example, last year in 2016, with the two teams that we have, three teams that we have in the field, we responded to 524 crisis calls, and those were countywide. And these are individuals that are in an acute crisis where nine-in-one's called and law enforcement responds. The stats are truly amazing in the sense that of these 524 calls where we contacted individuals, only 18 of those individuals ended up going to jail, and that was probably most likely because they had a warrant. So in each of these situations, we were able to de-escalate the situation and then connect the individual with services that Ann Marie will be talking about in a minute. So the team is doing great things. It's helping get people connected to the services and not into the criminal justice system, which they don't get the help that they truly need. And this expansion is a great way to continue the partnership that we have with the Woodburn Police Department and connectivity to North County. So I'm pretty excited about this opportunity, and I think the great working relationship we have with the Woodburn Police and Chief Ferraris, this is just a natural fit to expand capacity. It'll give us more of a presence in North County, as well as expanded times to cover the entire county. And hopefully, we'll see those numbers increase in the amount of calls that we're able to respond to.
Before I let you go, I had no idea it was that many. That sets me back a bit, you know, almost a couple a day. So it is reaching out to a lot of people. When you say the... Just to follow up, so if there was 524 five years ago, how many of those would've gone to jail, and which isn't the place they'd go?
I'd have to say it would be a high percentage. This works out to 3% of those individuals go into jail. It probably could've been upwards of 50, because there were no other options. So this is, yeah, it is impressive, and it's very good for our community.
Thank you.
Just to highlight our need for expansion, even though we were able to get out to 524 calls, there were over 2,000 reports that were sent to our Crisis Outreach Response Team, which means that we still have a long way to go to get enough officers on the street to really make a good response. And so our goal with expanding out to Woodburn is that we're going to be able to really get more focus in the North County. The team, like all the teams, will be available to respond throughout the county as needed, but it's going to give us an opportunity to build that relationship with our North County communities, including Mount Angel and Silverton, and really have more of a presence and build that collaboration up there as well. It also helps us to highlight the memorandum of understanding that the Sheriff's Office has created with a variety of law enforcement agencies that really encourages them to bring folks to the psychiatric crisis center or to services for treatment versus putting them in the jail, where they usually get worse rather than better. And so we're readily accessing services, treatment, getting wraparound services, addressing barriers to stability in the community. And that's been really successful so far. So we're very excited about being able to expand. We hope to continue to expand in the future as monies are available, so that we can do a really collaborative and really thoughtful response to Marion County and our citizens.
If I go back, the Sheriff has one question. So do you set this up on shifts to provide 24-hour coverage? And I might be wrong, but I assume more calls come at night or later at night. And so how do you deal with that?
So we're not 24 hours a day, because we just, we only have two teams. We have a county team, and we have a city of Salem team, and then we'll be adding this Woodburn team. What we do is try to cover peak hours during the week, and I believe the shifts are from four in the evening, three in the evening?
Two to midnight.
Two to midnight. So that's kind of the peak time based on the call loads that we see, but obviously, with vacation time, training time, sick time, we can't continually cover those hours. So this additional team will really help to kind of plug those holes when folks are out, so that we do truly have that seven-day-a-week coverage. Ideally, we'd like to go to 24/7. This is just another kind of step in that direction, where we always have a crisis team on, but unfortunately, we just have to do these as funding allows.
So do you ever call them out? Does that happen? Is there anything so drastic, or...
Not typically, because if it's an emergency, we'll have first responders go. They will respond if they're working, but the good news is we have CIT training with vast majority of our law enforcement here in Marion County. We continue to offer that training. So there is a level of training that each officer brings with them around dealing with a mental health crisis. It's just when you leverage a clinician and a deputy or an officer that specializes in this area, you get a little bit higher level training and knowledge and around resource connection.
I think we're certainly heading in the right direction. I guess, if you can hear me, I'd like more.
Yeah, thanks.
So...
Commissioner Cameron isn't here. I thought I'd retell his story about being on a ride-along and going to Woodburn with a sheriff's deputy and getting up there, and there was a Salem police officer with a crisis clinician. And I think a young woman was trying to commit suicide or something, and they got her taken care of, and Kevin was really impressed with the professionalism of both the police officers, the sheriff's officer, and the clinician. I think it says a lot about our Marion County staff and the work they do for the citizens of Marion County is tremendous, so much so that we get a lot of recognition statewide for this program. I don't know how much training you have to do in other counties, but I think you've done some, because it is such a good program. It keeps people from getting into a major confrontation with a police officer. And in other jurisdictions, you read all the time about them being shot or hurt, and this doesn't happen here when you've got clinicians working with the police officers. I think they're doing a great job.
One last question. Who answered it? How does this sustain itself? Because that kind of buys a year. Well, this mobile, what is it, Mental Health Investment Grant?
Yeah.
Will that be continued? Any indication, or how's that work?
I think everybody's worried about what's going to happen with the future with the Affordable Care Act. And what we know is that for the next biennium, the dollars that the state has set aside for investment into crisis diversion and jail diversion and Mobile Crisis is going to be sustained. What we have discussed with Woodburn is that this $190,000 is for the first two years with the intent that they will build it into their budget. So the goal is long-term sustainability and an investment by their, on their part, to continue to partner with us.
That's wonderful. All right, anything else?
No, this is something that we've been talking about, the Public Safety Coordinating Council. Chief Ferris serves on that council, and we had a discussion about it, I think, a month or two ago, and he was very excited that we were able to add this team. I think that one of the things that is important to note is that the U.S. Department of Justice actually reviewed the mental health services in the State of Oregon, and in their recommendations, they want Mobile Crisis Teams for everybody around the state, and they're setting some pretty tough standards. I think you have to actually reach out within an hour in urban areas, and maybe a couple hours, four hours, I can't remember what the benchmark was, within rural areas. Two hours, okay? Thank you. So we are leading the way, as usual, on this, and I want to thank the efforts of Ann Marie and Scott and Health Department and the Sheriff's Office for the great work that they do. So you want me to make a motion?
Would you please?
So, Mr. Chair, I would move approval of the Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Woodburn on behalf of the Woodburn Police Department for $190,000 to provide one sworn law enforcement professional to the Mobile Crisis Team.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I neglected to say, and I think the citizens of Marion County need to know that Ann Marie manages a crisis center here in Salem for the county, and it's unusual because there are very few counties that have crisis centers. I don't know, Ann Marie, do you know how many there are?
I think we're up to three, and I think two more are going to open before the end of this year.
Yeah, and they do such a good job that, again, they're held up as the best in the state, and everybody's trying to copy us. Thank you, Ann Marie.
Thank you.
I feel like telling a story. I've got to tell it very carefully. Someone close to me was having mental health issues out at the coast and was taken by the local police, held for a month, and all they needed was to be on the proper medication, and it declined from there. So I maybe can tell them a little sensitive about it, and I do hope that those on the coast start a program like this. Anything else? All right, I'll call a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes again. Thank you, and thanks for all your work.
Thank you.
Our next items under Public Works, we consider appeal of a hearings officer's decision denying partition case 16014 Kaufman. Brandon Reich is here. Now, Commissioner Carlson, you told me, and this worries me, that you watched our meeting a couple weeks ago...
I did.
And actually saw the public hearing, so you'll be current, or at least, no, not current.
I could be prepared, yes.
You're always better than anyone. But we left it kind of the record open, hoping to find an agreement that would resolve and make the best for the citizens living on that road, for people using 70th Avenue Street, and that would, as a former counsel told us, have a correct nexus, that we wouldn't be asking for too much to pave the whole world. So I'm hoping that accord's been reached, and would you tell us where we are, Brandon?
I will. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Brandon Reich, staff representing the Planning Division of Public Works. Before you today is the consideration of an appeal for a request to partition a nine-acre parcel in an acreage residential zone into three parcels. As you mentioned, we held a hearing, board held a hearing, continue that hearing. The record closed last week. The hearing closed two weeks ago, and so before the day, before the board today is only the consideration of the appeal. The record and the hearing are both closed. In the ensuing week, in two weeks now, staff has worked with the applicant and the applicant's attorney, and we have largely come to a proposal that staff can present to the board to consider. The applicant and Public Works are proposing road improvements which would apply to this decision. These improvements are starting at the eastern edge of Canyon Street and moving west, just to briefly describe them. Construct an apron and turnout within the right-of-way of Canyon Street at 70th. Then moving west at the eastern edge of the subject property to a paved turnout in approximately the middle of the property. Place gravel so that the width of Canyon Street is improved to a minimum of 16 feet wide.
I could interrupt you there. When you say gravel, you mean what's a little base, something that could hold up for car or truck to use?
Correct.
Thank you.
It's like six or inch, six or eight inch width thickness of gravel for driving surface.
Okay.
And that's a standard that's from the county engineering standards.
Thank you.
Then, approximately in the middle of the subject property to the south on Canyon, construct a paved turnout in the Canyon Street right-of-way. This is for the fire trucks, other large trucks to be able to turn around, and any car. Finally, on the western part of the subject property along Canyon Street, enter into a non-remontance agreement to build or financially contribute to construction of an extension of the improved surface of Canyon Street at such a time as the street is improved, such as for development adjacent to the property on the south or at the end of Canyon Street. There are two remaining issues regarding the improvements proposed as conditions of approval. One, the applicant desires to construct the roadway improvements but wishes to do them after a plat is recorded and before dwellings are built. For the applicant, this is more cost-effective, because proceeds from the sale of parcels can pay for the improvements. However, there is not a direct means to require off-site improvements before a building permit is issued. Planning staff could attempt to do it through conditions of a land use approval. However, a property purchaser of one of those newly created parcels would likely be very surprised to discover roadway improvements were not done prior to plating, because it's very unusual, before they purchase the property, and they would be required to do these improvements before they could construct a dwelling. Once a plat is recorded and a property is sold, there is no good way to require the roadway improvements be accomplished prior to a dwelling being built. The plating process, however, provides that means to ensure that improvements are constructed prior to the plat being recorded. Staff suggests that the improvements be required prior to plating. The second issue is whether the apron at 70th and Canyon should be paved or gravelled, in part or in full. I have John Rasmussen with me here from the Public Works Land Development Engineering Permit that can describe the county's interests in paving that apron and the pull-off there at Canyon and 70th.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Rasmussen, Public Works. You know, we have a proposal by the applicant to add gravel to Canyon Street down towards the west end. Excuse me. And while the county would prefer pavement to have a homogenous driving surface and to minimize the need for maintenance, the apron approach, connection with 70th, receives more turning movements by vehicles, not just straight down-the-line travel. And so what would happen, what will happen, is that gravel will become mixed onto the paved surface, and then what you'll have is you'll have tires attempting to gain purchase on the pavement and spinning out on gravel. You'll have gravel being dragged out onto the 70th road surface, and it will become potholed, filled with water, and potentially a road hazard, too, with gravel onto 70th. So there's a strong desire on our part, not just for this case, but for any development serving more than two residences on either a private lane or, in this case, a local access road, to have a paved apron of about 20 feet long perpendicular to the county road, that is, so that it is, it provides safe ingress egress and is not a maintenance issue for our road operations, folks. Now, there is, you know, there is issue with paving during the winter months, but in the same token, there is also problems with getting pavement when the building picks up in the spring and the summer, and, you know, you have developers that may be on a wait for a couple months, but the only way to guarantee that that's done, along with other improvements, is to hold a plat for that. And so with the proper planning and so forth, a developer can accomplish their paving needs if they get on a waiting list.
John, any idea what it costs to pave this area that we're referring to?
Well, to pave a full apron would be about $3,500, because there is already a portion of the existing aprons already paved. I would say maybe on the order of $2,000. I mean, there's going to be a mobilization component of that, but I would say within a couple thousand dollars. Certainly, maybe no more than $3,000.
So could you lay out where we're at with this? I'm lost in this conversation, all right? So I'm hearing you say, "Well, this is what we recommend, and this is what we need to do, and they only need to pay that." What I want to hear is, okay, here are the issues that the hearings officer was saying that we had to resolve. Here are the issues that are already resolved through the hearing that I watched on TV and wasn't here for last time. We're down to these couple of issues. Now with these couple of issues, here's what we think, here's what they think, and this is the negotiated agreement. Or are you telling me that you're still at odds and you want us to play God and say "you, not you"? All right? That's what I need to know.
Okay.
I think it's yes.
Right. Well, if it is, I'm unhappy with that. So let's figure this out, okay?
Okay. We are to the point where we have agreed on conditions of approval, but we have not agreed on whether the applicant and the staff have not been able to agree during this time on whether the apron should be paved and whether it was...
Okay. Back up, back up, back up, back up. Okay, so what conditions of approval have you agreed on? There were like four issues when we left. When I left three weeks ago or something like that, there were four issues left, and then you dealt with a couple. I want to, I need you to recap that, okay?
I'll recap, sure. The first issue was that the easement that crosses the property that would serve the newly created parcels, the first issue, the question was, would it exceed a 12% grade? And the applicant engineer demonstrated that the easement that goes north off Canyon across the parcels would not exceed a 12% grade.
So that one's resolved?
That one is resolved.
Okay, so then what's the next one?
The second question the hearings officer brought up under the denial was whether or not the applicant would be able to evaluate and mitigate stormwater impacts. And the applicant engineer demonstrated that they would be able to get the required permits to achieve, to evaluate, and to get the permits for stormwater impacts. So that's resolved.
So that was resolved, okay. And then I thought the third one was whether or not there was the turnaround part right in front of the property, and then the last one was whether or not they had to pave the road entirely all the way down. Is that right?
The turnaround, we've always agreed to. It's always been on the maps and such.
So turnaround is resolved. So are we just down to one, or are we down to two?
Just two aspects of the roadway improvements.
Okay, so the last one is the roadway improvement, and then it's an A and a B under the roadway improvement.
And the Fire District, by the way, has weighed in and does not have any concerns about the Canyon Street used for these additional lots.
The what?
The Fire District weighed in and has no concerns about Canyon Street being used for these additional lots.
Okay. All right, so the Fire District piece is resolved, too. Okay.
The request to have these improvements done after the plat, before building permits, is not one that we've had on the table this entire time. It came out just last Tuesday, and it's very unusual in that I can't think of a time where we've done that in the past because of the complications.
Okay, but that wasn't in the hearings officer's report?
That was not.
Right, so this is a new thing that came up while you were trying to negotiate the roadway?
Came up last Tuesday, correct.
And so the argument that you were making at the beginning, that I wasn't understanding why you were arguing about it, is because of that discussion? Okay, that helps. Thank you.
So the distance between the applicant's proposal and staff is very small. We agreed to the substance. It's just a couple tweaks then within that on how we would proceed. And one is on the plating, whether the improvements get done before or after plating, and the other is whether the apron is paved in part or entirely, or is part of it gravelled.
Okay, so let's back up. So the staff is saying that the improvement should happen before the plating?
Correct.
And the applicant is requesting after the plating?
After plating, before building permits.
And why are they requesting it after the plating?
Being able to sell off parcels will generate income that will pay, that can pay for the improvement work.
Oh, because they're looking for money to do the work. Okay, and so then the next part is whether or not they should gravel or pave the road. So I guess it sounds like we're agreeing that the road needs to be widened. It's just a question of how, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
I might interrupt you a little bit, Commissioner. I met with them after that admission meeting, met with staff, and came up with the idea that it was not really our role to make them pave the whole thing, but as a trade-off, I was hoping to use the apron. And if you saw that, it's to not leave traffic hung up down on 70th, get people waiting to come in. When we talked, it seemed gravel was all right, in that most of the traffic would be coming in and not dragging out on the 70th. They're now concerned it'll eat up and damage a little bit of pavement that's already on Canyon. So I don't quite know how. And then I want to, I am interrupting you, and I'm sorry, but I'm not sure...
You're forgiven.
This kind of sounds like a prescient kind of thing. You always say, "No, land use doesn't," but it kind of does. If you've given a break that we don't, in demand, improvements being done prior to the plating, that kind of becomes our standard, and I don't think we want to get there as our rule of thumb. So I don't know if you can discuss that, if I'm wrong.
Well, so I guess I'm just trying to understand, before we get too much into it, what the issues are. So they want to do gravel. You're saying pavement is, your position is it needs to be paved, is that right?
Yes, yes.
And you're saying that the pavement cost is only $3,000 to $3,500?
Probably on the high end, and I, as I alluded to... And I, as I alluded to before, and I would just want to restate, I truly believe that any desire by the applicant to simply gravel the entrance versus pave it is, boils down to the notion that they may have difficulty getting asphalt at this time of year. Now it can be done. They'd have to track the bigger jobs like the, you know, the city of Salem. They fire the plants up for the city of Salem and we have a large project on Shaft Road, a subdivision that is receiving paving work. So to mitigate that concern about being able to pave that driveway, and it is a valid concern because we have other developers that are expressing the same, you know, issues, we may be willing to entertain through a condition that the developer has until May 15th, let's say mid-May, end of May, to get that apron paved, such that it would be paved prior to, let's say, final building inspection on any one of the proposed lots. So that's kind of a real way of dealing with the concern that they may have about getting that done so they can get their plat. But I would totally be against having that in gravel for the reasons I've already stated. And Commissioner Brontano was right in that, you know, we don't want to change our development standards. It's going to set a precedent that we can't live with on future projects.
So functionally, how does it work if you give them till May? What happens for second, third? So they wait till May? Do they still then have to wait? When you said even if it means, I was trying to follow you on the building inspection part. So are you, is it sort of a modification of the after plat before building permit issue if you let it go till May? Describe how that works.
Yes, it, so the road improvements, adding the gravel to widen it to meet the Fire County standards could be done in mostly any weather. So yes, the modification to that condition would be only for the paving of the access approach. Now, being that it's, you know, the time of year that it is now, early February, by the time the plat gets recorded, they could sell a lot, they could come in for a building permit. It's probably going to be spring anyways. And any building would probably not be ready for final inspection till midsummer or so. And so there's very little, there would be very little risk on our part other than the possibility that an individual lot owner or builder who may have bought the lot would be saddled with that if the developer didn't get it done. So there would be, there would still be some risk. But the reality is that if we hold firm on the paving prior to plat recordation and they want to get that plat recorded, let's say by the, you know, the end of March, they may have some difficulty getting asphalt. That's just the reality of it.
I'm still trying to wade through all the words and understand whether or not...
So it's a compromise on our part?
Whether or not the plat comes before or after. So you're saying, when I was trying to listen to the progression, Brandon, can you help me with this?
Sure. So the plat gets recorded and then the parcels can be sold off to individuals and then individuals come in and can build a house on the property. And maybe that the property owner continues to own one of the parcels and builds a home and there's a good tie-in then to say, before you get final on your house, you've got to pay that apron or do something with the apron. But it may also be that circumstances change and the properties are all sold to other individuals. And then suddenly, one of the individuals come in, either it's the first one or it's the last of the three parcels, two parcels to be developed. And we say, "You can't get final inspection until you've paved this apron." And it wasn't figured into their loan or any expectations they had when they built the home. We haven't had issues like this come up for a long time, in my memory. Sometimes we had conditions on permits back in the eighties and people will come in today and we try to work that out with them because suddenly there's something that's left undone back from all that time and it was a property owner's responsibility to have done that and they had no way to expect that.
Okay, so...
So that, we don't want to get in that situation again.
Right, so I'm listening to you and both of what you've said has some logic behind it. I'm just trying to understand the sequence of events. So if we have, as I've written it down, we have one condition left to deal with and that's the roadway. There are two issues regarding the roadway. One is, is it gravel or pavement? I clearly heard you want it to be pavement. The second is, do we allow them to make, do we require the improvements before the plat or after the plat? And I heard staff say that you wanted, that our practice is that we want to do it before the plat and that's what staff is recommending. The applicant wants it after the plat, so that was clear. But then if you allow them until May, is it before or after the plat? That's the piece I'm trying to understand.
If we allow them until May, there's two different ways to look at that. If you allow them until May, it could be before or after the plat regardless. Because the plat may not be done by May. Sometimes it takes them longer than to May to get a plat done. So an absolute date is one way to hold it into place, based on the timing, weather, temperature.
So you're substituting whether, you're not, you're kind of setting aside the idea about whether the improvements happen before or after the plat and you're putting a firm date when the improvements need to be done regardless of when the plat is done, is that correct?
That's one idea. That's one way to approach it. And there's a second way is based on the building permit.
Well, so, and I'll say it again, that the applicant is proposing to add gravel widening to Canyon Street. Not, we're not talking about the approach. I'm talking about the street itself. And while we don't, we're not in favor of that, graveling can be done in any temperature, at any temperature. Asphalt pavement is temperature sensitive and it can't be put down in the rain either. So asphalt pavement really can't be put down at a temperature lower than about 45 degrees.
Okay, I can appreciate this is detail probably that I don't need to be worried about. Really what I'm concerned about is as the decision maker here, in terms of making a motion or figuring out what we're going to do, what is it that we're asking them to do? What are the conditions that you are proposing? And I want to hear it from Brandon. On the, not on the gravel and pavement issue, on the before or after plat issue. What is your staff recommendation? As we've been wandering, like all over the place here, okay?
So before I say, I want to mention that I don't think this will set a strong precedent. It's unusual to have a non-county road that we're looking for roadway improvements that don't fully meet engineering standards, but that come close. And it's kind of a compromised situation anyway. We're kind of in compromised territory regardless of meeting those full engineering standards. So I don't think we're setting a strong precedent, if any. It's just, it's a method to work through a process to look at that. Based on what I've heard from the temperature issue, I think that if we require the gravel along the road before the plat and then the apron be dealt with by a time period regardless of the plat, it sounds like that would work.
That's what I was wondering, if you could do a sequential with gravel and then pavement. So that's what you're suggesting?
However, if, on the second issue, if the board decides the apron should just be gravelled, then that could all be done before the plat. It's just that pavement that triggers a timing, a time issue.
I'm happy.
I finally understand it, thank you.
I think you do, if you're ready to make a motion. But I can tell you that I now think it needs to be paved instead of just gravel and it seems reasonable. And we're trying to accommodate and if they can't accept it, then they go back to, if I have this right, to the hearings officer's recommendation and go from there. Or no, this becomes the current. This is what they would appeal if they can't live with it.
Correct.
All right, I think it's our best shot at a compromise. I hope it is. So I don't know if I am capable, but perhaps you can make a motion and incorporate it.
Well, and I probably should pull out the recommendations here. All right, so the first part of my motion is that I would move that we close the record, is that right?
The record closed last week.
Record, okay. Well, I'm reading off of your recommendations, so you didn't actually put any recommendation on paper then, did you? All right, all right. So we would approve the request in petition case number 16014 Kaufman with, and direct staff to go back and write, you'll come back, right?
I will, with an order.
With an order.
Conditions of approval, findings.
That includes the findings and the conditions of approval. That within those conditions of approval, and I don't need to go through all the things that have been resolved because that's what allows us to approve it, but there would be conditions that would involve the roadway. And I don't think, I'm talking too much here in my motion, I don't think Canyon's, no, I'm sorry, the street in front, right? Seventieth or whatever, we don't have to deal with that one at all, right? So it's just Canyon?
Yeah, correct.
All right, so the roadway on Canyon. And I think the position of the board is that those conditions would include paving ultimately.
Apron.
The apron, with the possibility of gravel initially in order to get it moving, is that right?
Possibly, or the apron could be paid by a certain date.
Right, exactly. Okay, so that's my motion.
We can work that date out.
So just, I'm going to second it, but so you'll capture the date, capture the paving, capture the other...
Right, well, I think the date is May 1st, is that the date that you're looking at?
May 15th is what I heard.
Just, May 15th would probably be sufficient.
All right, I'm going to second the motion. I hope it's all clear enough.
Yeah, I don't know if it's clear.
Kristy, she's smiling, so we have something to work with. And you'll come back with an order that encapsulates all that. Any further discussion? All right, now call a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item, and it is after 9:30, is to open a public hearing that adopts the second supplemental budget for fiscal year 2016 and '17. Jeff White, Richard Meinaker, and there's no one here wishes to comment. So when you're ready, please begin.
Good morning all. I'm Rich Meinaker from Finance Department. To my left is Mr. Jeff White. And I'd like to present the fiscal year 2016-17 Second Supplemental Budget in accordance with county policies and Oregon budget law. Public notice of this meeting was published in the Statesman Journal. The supplemental request may be found on the county website and it is also at the board's reception desk. The Second Supplemental Budget increases the total county budget by slightly less than $2 million to almost $404 million. The supplemental budget has been reviewed by the commissioners. I will limit my discussion to budget change highlights. I will state amounts to the nearest $1,000. The general fund total budget will increase $10,000 from a transfer from the Criminal Justice Assessment Fund. The Juvenile Department budget will increase $53,000 to cover personnel services cost of living adjustment. There are three increases in transfers out. $31,000 to the Central Services Fund for Marion County Business Enterprise Enhancement Project Contracted Services. $60,000 to the Park Fund and $33,000 to the Public Works Fund. Contingency is reduced to cover expenditures. The Community Corrections Fund budget will increase $187,000, of which $177,000 is State Department of Corrections grant funding for Women's Accelerated Reentry Program. The grant funds will use to provide reentry services such as mental health and addiction treatment, employment preparation, and transitional planning to female inmates. Remaining $10,000 is allocated to contingency. The District Attorney Grants Fund budget will increase $43,000. The revenue is a charge for services under the terms of a memorandum of understanding between the District Attorney's Office and the Health Department. The Health Department will reimburse the DA's office for the cost of part-time, a part-time new deputy district attorney that will work at the psychiatric crisis center. Employee will aid and assist mental health treatment patients accused of crimes to achieve a level of legal understanding necessary to cooperate with attorneys and participate in their own defense. The Health Fund budget will increase $802,000. Notable increases are state funding that will enhance and expand services for mental health and substance abuse and crisis services. The latter includes $338,000 for mobile crisis services, $155,000 for the aid and assist project that allows mental health patients accused of crimes to achieve treatment goals, $133,000 for the jail diversion project, and $54,000 for a fiduciary fiscal intermediary for the youth rental assistant program. Eight personnel positions have been added. The Parks Fund budget will increase $60,000 with a transfer from the General Fund. The funds will purchase and install park fee collection points at the North Fork and Salmon Falls parks, purchase a riding mower, and pay for four temporary employees to help with maintenance and operations. The Public Works Fund budget will increase $255,000. A federal emergency management grant was reduced $33,000 and a general fund transfer in is requested to offset the reduction. Charges for services are increased $230,000 for road maintenance agreements with the city of Silverton, Salem, and Kaiser. This is, there is a $94,000 decrease in personnel services as three positions are transferred to the stormwater management program. Materials and services is increased $263,000 primarily for slurry seal work for the three cities previously discussed. Capital outlay is increased $183,000 for one large road repair project and for two other small projects. The Sheriff's Grant Fund budget will increase $159,000. Intergovernmental revenue will increase $135,000 for several small grants, including a training grant, a bulletproof vest grant, and a body camera grant, as well as a contract with the Marine State, the Oregon State Marine Board for patrol of county lakes and rivers and with the Oregon State Hospital to transport patients. Transfers in totaling $24,000 will augment the jail reinvestment program and the search and rescue program. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions? Nope, as you mentioned, we've gone over this and seems to all make sense and be justified, so...
So Mr. Chair, I would move that we close the public hearing and approve the Second Supplemental Budget for fiscal year 2016-17.
I'll second it, so it's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing and approve the Second Supplemental Budget. Any further discussion? Again, thank you all. Call a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you. All right, that's the end of our agenda items this morning. Other than read the places will be, this is a smaller list. But, I'll read what we've got. Monday, 8 o'clock to 3, Association of Oregon County Steering and Legislative Committees and Board Meeting, Local Government Center, 1201 Court Street, Northeast in Salem. Tuesday, the 14th, 7:30 to 8:30, State and Marion County Meeting, Covered Bridge Cafe, 510 North Third Avenue in Staton. And then next Wednesday will be our next board session, 9 o'clock here in the Senator Hearing Room. And then we'll be leaving to watch the new mayor of Salem give a state of the city address at the Salem Convention Center, 200 Commercial Street, Southeast in Salem. All right. Anything else you'd like to talk about this morning?
Not really.
Not really? This would be your opportunity to let the statesman know what you think?
No, I'm writing it down.
You're writing it, okay. Well, they've taken my gavel. I can't believe it. We'll never be able to close this meeting. We'll never be able to close this meeting.
Uh-oh.
All right, let's call this meeting adjourned.